Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I thought the order, the regular meeting of Mayor and Council of Englewood Cliffs. Today is April 12th, 2017. It's 8:18 PM. I'm sorry that we're starting late. We had a caucus meeting run overtime. So, I'm also not promising that I'm gonna catch up on time, but I'll do my best. Have a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Kranjak.
Here.
Councilperson Zaversa.
Here.
E. Park.
Here.
O.
Here.
McMorro.
Here.
M. Park.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Present.
Superintendent of DPW.
Here.
And Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to observe a moment of silence for several members of our community who passed away since our last meeting. Mr. John Patrick Avalone, Lucy Escudlou, and if there's anyone else that I'm missing, please just yell out their names.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was a resident from Sonic Street who passed away on April 4th, Mr. Chi Young Chung.
Okay. All right, let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Also would like to mention that last week, on April 6th, we commemorated the line of duty death of former Police Chief Frederick Witty with his family, our police department, the Bergen County Chiefs Association. We welcomed him, we had a wreath ceremony. The family was very appreciative. Just a couple of words that I said were that we are joined today by Chief Witty's sons, Paul, daughter Teresa, son Warren, and grandson Steven, who's actually a Bergen County Sheriff's Officer, to whom we continue to express our gratitude for their father's valiant, professional, honest, truthful, and courteous service to our borough and its residents for 27 years. So that's just an excerpt. These speeches were very nice and auditory, and it was a nice commemoration of a very Madam Clerk, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Okay, thank you. I have two proclamations that I would like to read into the record. The first is the Armenian Genocide Commemoration, 2017. Whereas, since 1915, April 24th of each year, has been imprinted in the memory of the Armenian people worldwide, for it was then that the mass genocide of the Armenian people began in the Ottoman Turkish Empire, the first such genocide in the 20th century. And 2017 marks the 102nd anniversary of the historic tragedy. And whereas Armenian families were uprooted from their ancestral home, homeland, brutally exposed to all kinds of indignities with hundreds of thousands slain, resulting in more than half of the Armenian people killed. And whereas recognition of the 102nd anniversary of this genocide is crucial to guarding against the repetition of future genocide and educating people about the atrocities connected to these horrific events. And whereas Armenian Americans have greatly enriched our society through their leadership in business, agriculture, academia, government, and the arts. And whereas our thoughts over the memory of the Armenian martyrs of 1915 will serve to remind governments of the world that persecution, torture, and killing must cease forever. Now, I, Mario, am Kranjak Mayor of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2017, and every April 24th thereafter as Armenian Genocide Commemoration in the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. So, we live in a great country and a great town as well, so we have to commemorate those things. Other people have been less fortunate than us. There's another proclamation, Arbor Day, 2017. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, 2017 is the 145th anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Mario L. Kranjak, Mayor of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2017, as the 145th anniversary celebration of Arbor Day in the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and gardens. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to broaden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Go plant a tree. Let's approve the minutes of the special meetings of February 2nd, 2017, and regular meeting, you know, special meeting of February 27th, 2017 also. Have a motion to approve those?
I'm the board of mayors. Listen, do you want to carry those minutes on the 27th? Do you have the chance to look at that email? 27th, February 27th.
You sent me an email?
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're carrying them.
By what? Just 27th, I'll just carry it. I think you may have to make an adjustment or something.
Well, let's have a motion to approve February 2nd, 2017 special meeting minutes.
So much.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We received correspondence from Eric M. Bernstein, as Attorney-Klien Privileged, and from resident Lauren Eastwood. Claims for the period. Can I have the Finance Committee Chairperson address those?
I've reviewed the claims for the period, March 9th to April 12th, and I move that they be paid. Let me second.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Yeah, I need a discussion on the claims.
Okay.
So, there was a claim, I was signing checks yesterday, and it seems that there was a block billing from the Borough Attorney.
Block?
Yeah, it was.
It was a block billing, I don't know what that means.
So, on February 8th, there was a bill, I, there's a bill from, from, and it was 7.1 hours of work that day. So, and it didn't have, like, all the other billing was just, you know, it shows what it was exactly for. This was a block bill, like it just said, receipt review of, like, lines, these, and then it said, discussions with Borough Council President, and then also.
All in one?
Yeah, just one paragraph.
That was 5.9, it was, I mean.
No, it was 7.1.
I think there were like 30 items listed though, or something.
No, it was just that one. And so, I actually signed it, but I crossed it out, so I don't know, you know, I asked for some more information on that.
Okay, February 8th?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look at it. And I'll send it to the board, or Borough Administrator.
Okay.
Okay.
Simple on that subject, anyway. Do we, do we have an idea where we're at with our Borough Attorney? I mean, yeah, really. Like, are we on a time limit with your firm, or?
Yeah, I, I, we are month-to-month, we are holdover, and you've been asking, so I think this needs to be on the agenda for the regular meeting in May, and it needs to be resolved in one way or another, how the Borough is gonna proceed.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
So, let's, let's work, let's get that on the May agenda.
Can we, so, we have a motion on the floor in a second, right? So.
We'll pay the bills.
But I would like to hold over the bill for the Borough Attorney until we get more information on that claim.
The way that the Administrator, she's not here tonight, you know, she was unable to make it, the way that she wants to handle any bills that have questions, just send her an email, and they will not mail out until the, you get the answers you want.
Okay, so we're not gonna pay for that day until we get more information?
She prefers that we not ever, whoever the vendor is, that we don't pull checks. I did ask for that question today, now she wants to cancel that. Not to pull up any specific check, let her know of your question, and then she'll get your answers.
Wait, so we're not pulling the check, we're approving all the claims?
Yes.
And she's not, she's gonna hold it over?
She's, she will hold it over.
Right, but we're approving all the claims?
Yes.
But how do we, how do we approve something that we don't really know the specific to?
Okay, well, 'cause, and I appreciate, Ellen, going forward, the proper procedures, if you have a question, first of all, never sign a check if you have a question. I thought I saw your signature on there, I did not see it crossed out. Your signature was on there, so.
No, I crossed it out.
Okay, I didn't see it crossed out. So, anyway, if you have a question, at the time that you view it, you don't wait till the council meeting to bring it up publicly like this, you try and get your answer, obviously ahead of time, so that you can get your answer and be able to vote and do whatever you need to do, give the jury the opportunity to get you your answer clearly right here, she can't answer your question. I do remember that specific portion, I had some questions also, and in that paragraph, I think there were not exaggerating 20 items that were listed all together. So, if you're, what you're saying is you'd rather them be separated out, that's something as a, as a procedure, we can ask them to separate it out, so that it's separated, better be, instead of putting one large paragraph.
Right.
But that's, that's something for you and Catherine and the Borough Attorney to figure out on that one item you're asking about.
Do you have an email account for that, is that?
Yes, please, yeah. Just let her know that you have a question on that, and you have a question on how you'd like it separated going forward, 'cause she had some questions herself on other ones, and I specifically asked her, and I'm not gonna get into the vendors right now, who they were, she stated to me, approve the bills, because otherwise, we don't like to hold, unless it's an incorrect bill. I mean, clearly she did the work, but you're questioning on how it was formatted on the bill, okay? I'm sure you're not accusing the Borough Attorney of not doing the work. So, what Catherine said, it's not proper that we hold back money from our vendors. So, you email her your question, and then she'll hold it until you get the answers you want.
Okay.
If that's okay. Okay, thank you.
Do we have a vote?
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro.
Yes.
M. Park.
Yes.
Wu. Passes, Mayor.
Okay. Have a motion to open up the public? The board?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
I'm gonna call on members of the public who wish to speak to state your name and address. Before I call on anyone, there was one item on the agenda which I suspect will motivate people to speak, and I'll speak first. We, as a council, have agreed, or at least we all see eye to eye on this one issue. And that issue is that there is, there's a problem with our public safety in terms of the departments that are involved in public safety. Why is there a problem? Well, we have nine lawsuits, the litigations against the town involving our police department. That's a lot. Eight of those nine actually involve police officers suing police officers, or police officers suing the Borough, the council, yes, the mayor also. This is not a normal situation. I personally can certify to everyone here that this Borough has paid every penny owed, given every benefit due to our police department. I, in fact, have had very minimal contact by design. Because I'm not a police officer, I never was. I'm not in law enforcement. I leave that to professionals. But when I leave things to professionals, I expect the most of those professionals. So, my contacts with the police department have been budget meetings, a couple last year, a couple this year, asking for reports of historic events that took place in the police department. What was the overtime last month? Is everybody safe? Have there been injuries? Those are historical. I don't direct, I don't tell, I don't tell people what to do. We have people who are in charge of the police department, we have people in charge of the fire department. The other thing I do is, when citizens come up to the microphone here, they're in public portion, or when they email me as mayor and say, "Look, you know, baby's become a drag racing strip, people are writing stop signs, don't people know what a stop sign is in town?" I will relay that to the appropriate authorities for them to deal with it, not for me to deal with it, but for them to deal with it. So, we, as a council, do see eye to eye on this, there is a problem. And I wanted to start a discussion tonight about how we solve the problem. We're not all gonna agree, but I think we could all agree that there is a problem. The solutions vary. You'll see that there's discussion of a public safety director on the agenda. You know, it could be a police director, it could be something else, I don't know. But one thing I could tell you is, we're not gonna continue like this. It's not fair. It's not fair to taxpayers. I don't know if you realize this, but our police budget represents one-third of our budget. We have 18 police officers making over $100,000, we have several over $200,000. Those are substantial salaries, those are great careers, and this is a great town, a great town to be a police officer in, okay? There is no war on cops in this town, that's somewhere else. Read Heather McDonald's book on that. It's tragic what is going on in America. And for the grace of God, that's not happening here, and I won't let that happen here. But what I do want, what I do want is, I want people to come to work, leave their politics at home, do your jobs, and this is what this is all about. Because every one of these litigations, just about, I think maybe one isn't, is politically motivated. It's clear, it's clear on its face. When you have police officers suing each other and the town, because one of the other officers came to work and allegedly, allegedly swung a six-foot harpoon knife over his head at police headquarters, with police around, and a video going on, and no one, no one saw it, there's no video, there's no proof. But that's what allegedly happened in the one case. It happened before I was mayor, allegedly, but I'm still being held responsible for it, because I created the unsafe workplace. I guess if I was mayor back then, you could argue, but I'm not in charge of workplace safety for police, the chief is, because as the chief of fire is for his men. And I have the utmost gratitude for what they do, but this has gotta stop. We can have police officers suing, and this is also another case, where a police officer alleges that another police officer fell asleep at his keyboard because he was either intoxicated or on drugs.
I have a question to your attorney, Mayor.
No, you cannot interrupt me.
Can he be talking about these pending litigations?
Yes, I can. You're out of order.
I'm asking you about the custody of our attorney. I'm only here to protect the county.
So, if, if an officer.
So far, nothing the mayor has said is confidential.
This is all public, this is all public, folks, you could pull this, go to Bergen County, go online, this is the ridiculous state of affairs, people read this, and they laugh at our town. It's not acceptable, it's not fair, and it's an affront to democracy, okay? And to target, to target your public officials, okay, the way this happened is not fair to them either. Okay, so here, here's what happens. One police officer, oh, he interrupted me, alleges that another police officer fell asleep at his computer, because he was on drugs or alcohol. And there's J's going across his screen, can you imagine? This is our police department. And no one tests him, no one tests him for drugs or alcohol, okay? But by law, you're supposed to, but no one does. You know what happens instead? The Borough gets sued. The Borough gets sued. There's no proof, okay? The police union sues the town because allegedly, it's an unsafe workplace for its members. I want our members to be safe, I want our police union to be safe. The chief is responsible for their safety, no one up here is responsible for their safety. What are we responsible for? We are responsible for giving you money to run the police department, the budget, okay? And we do that. And we may not always agree on how much is being spent on things, on overtime, whatever, but we give it to you, okay? But what we don't expect is that the taxpayers have to get hurt even more, because now we have to defend litigations, and we have to spend money on those, okay? It's not acceptable. We have allegations of ticket fixing. People's voices on tapes, we hear it ourselves. We have a, we have a, there's a fact pattern in one of the lawsuits, where one of our police officers, this is actually public, folks, one of our police officers says another police officer made him cry. Okay, so if you cry, you cry, but it's not, it's not actionable, you shouldn't be suing the town, it's an affront to democracy, what is happening. And I want to solve that. So, we're starting a discussion tonight, I see a lot of police officers there, maybe you guys have some ideas on how to solve the problem. Like I said, I've had very minimal contacts with your police department, okay? So, what, everything that I'm seeing here could only be summed up to either personal vendettas, politics, maybe? I'm not sure what else, but my goal here is to provide a good workplace for our police officers. These are careers, these are careers that are held in the balance by the decisions of leadership. We have to protect those careers. These people have families, they need these jobs, we appreciate them being here, and I'm open to discussion, guys. The other problem that we have is, in the nine litigations, and I just confirmed this with Lizette, our Borough Clerk, well, when you have litigations, each side gets to ask the other side questions, it's called discovery. Discovery could take different forms, it could be interrogatories, which are written questions with written answers, or smiling, sounds like you might have had some, document production, people have to produce documents that are relevant to the issues in the case, and depositions. What happens is, we have an insurance company that pays part of our defenses usually, and the insurance companies appoint lawyers. The lawyers get requests from the other side for us to produce documents. In the nine cases that we have, only one, only one attorney representing the Borough has contacted the clerk for information, okay? And that's one of the lawyers, I told how to do that, it's a relatively new case. All the other lawyers go anywhere they want in the Borough, we don't know what's being produced, we don't know how it's being produced, when it was created, if it's relevant, if it's not relevant, we don't know. You know, it doesn't make sense. So, a public safety director would also be in charge of that aspect of litigations. Just checking my notes. You know, we also had racial profiling issues last year. Okay, so, that said, I want to hear from people, this is what you're here for. And if there's anything else you want to speak about, we're happy to speak to you also. I know there's a, there's an easement issue that we have to deal with tonight also. All right, so anybody who wants to come up, we're all ears, we need solutions.
What the hell? Zach, Zach.
Do I have to do this together?
Oh, it's a great convention. I love you.
Good evening. Why Chief George Remo, why the cops have been here for over 100-plus years? Our jobs protect citizens and property. We're not part of this rhetoric, we don't care about this rhetoric, all we wanna do is our jobs. Let me finish, okay? 24/7, 365 days a year, we're here for the people. Haven't missed a call in 100-plus years. Last year, we had St. Michael's Village, nobody got hurt, nobody got hurt, firemen or civilians. Back in 1990, we had 333 Silver, lost the whole building, nobody got hurt, not even civilians, okay? So, we protected property, but we protected life, and that's it, okay? We had a caucus meeting in there today, talking about this public safety director. You didn't invite a police chief, you didn't invite a fire chief, you didn't invite a fire prevention. We're talking about our lives, our jobs, okay? And it's not my job, I'm here, I'm a resident, just like everybody else is, okay? I don't have to get up at 3:50 in the morning, I don't have to miss Christmas for my kids, I don't have to miss anything, okay? But I'm here, okay? Let me finish, okay? You got a picture there, a fire bomb started years ago, same thing, didn't miss a call. And now we're being drawn into this fourth point, sending somebody that doesn't even know anything about our department or our town, okay? I don't know if you have somebody picked, I've gotten calls from Fort Lee and Leonia, they know who picked them, rumors, okay? But I'm just saying, doesn't know our town, doesn't know our fire department, I live there.
Well, actually, I should say that Chief Remo has actually been a pleasure to work with. I know it's difficult for him sometimes for different reasons, but he's been nothing but a professional when I deal with him and his men. I'm very appreciative of everything you do. Thank you, Chief. St. Michael's Village Fire, I was there first, watching you guys operate, and I did a fantastic job and coordinated, I think, 12 or 13 other fire departments, and our police department was also there to help. But when we look at public safety, as a council, we have the right to meet privately, and we will certainly involve anyone that's relevant in those discussions, as you got to say tonight, I appreciate you getting up there and saying everything you did. Anybody else? Oh, by the way, there's no decision that's been made to the public, this is a discussion, okay? Which is probably why we're all screaming at each other right now. It's a discussion, and in order to have a public safety director, there'd have to be an ordinance. And to have an ordinance, there has to be a public portion where people get to speak about the ordinance. Now, it's, it's actually, it's interesting, you know, back in 2006, the former mayor and the current chief of police were supportive of a police director being appointed. There was an ordinance drafted, drafted, and I think it was during the public, during the, after the first reading, but it never passed, for whatever reason, I think there was a change in leadership at that time. But this is not, this is not novel or new. I think what happens is, when, when public safety departments have issues, sometimes a police director or a public safety director is in order. And I'm happy to know that the current police chief and the former mayor supported that as well at that time. Anybody else?
I'm just confused, I'm new to this, I'm just hearing you this for the first time.
Your name and address, please.
I. E. Scolnick.
Address.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you need your, your.
Your address.
Yeah, no, sorry.
We all know who you are.
Okay.
I'm just confused, based on what you just said, who's asking for a face at the table? Not to make the decision, but to be inclusive to those who are responsible. And I didn't hear that, I heard you'd be respectful of saying thanks for your comments, but I didn't hear an invitation to the table, and I'm confused why our leaders wouldn't be.
Of course, there's a standing invitation, there's a standing invitation, but not, this isn't happening tonight, this is the first time the council has met on this, it's a process.
So, going forward, then?
If we decide to go forward, yes, of course, of course, absolutely.
All right, tell me more about this 26th John Englewood Cliffs. What authority would this director have, what would he do? How would he override the chief? How would he override Remo, what would he do with the police department?
I'll make one point to this, and then the Borough Council will.
Okay, that's it.
You know how I'm always saying I want to take the politics out of the workplace?
Right.
Your purpose, right? One thing that will certainly get solved here is, no one could accuse me of bringing charges against anyone because of politics. I would surrender that authority to a public safety director or a police director. Yeah?
Yeah. And I think the mayor's made it clear, there's no ordinance yet, we're just opening a discussion.
No, 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 I understand.
So, one of the things that a public safety director, first of all, there's an issue as to whether we would include. as to whether we would include the fire department, which is a volunteer fire department that seems to be operating with no issues. There has been no determination for sure that the fire department would be included. We did send the chief a notice about this, as we did to the police chief, the fire chief, OEM.
That's all my.
I know, I'm just laying the groundwork for answering to you. So, the, the public safety director, as it can be envisioned, would be a, over the various public safety elements of the borough. That would be the office of emergency management, the police department, perhaps the fire department, the fire official, which is really governed by a fire code, and ambulance services. Now, for example, ambulance services we contract with. So what would the public safety director do? He would manage presenting that contract or negotiating that contract, and then presenting it for borough approval.
But my question is in fact, let's say the public guy who picks over whatever has an argument with the chief of police.
Well.
Now what?
Okay, so.
That's what I want to know. What's it?
The public safety director.
Was it saying, I said it, and that's it?
Okay, well.
Fifty-third a year or a hundred percent a year?
The public safety director will be given authority, which is managerial, executive in nature, which has to do with setting policy rather than daily, day-to-day functions or things that are normally in the chief's bill of rights, the statute that is the chief's bill of rights. Those are functions that he will continue to do. The public safety director within context of the police department would in fact be looking for a, doing managerial functions, including management of litigation, including production of discovery, including contract, contract processing. The chief and the department have a lot of contracts. They, they can sit, there was one sitting on my desk for three weeks now that the chief needs me to do. This is something that the public safety director can sign off on and get up to the borough clerk for inclusion on the agenda instead of waiting for maybe a lawyer to review, where the lawyer doesn't need to review. That's the kind of thing a public safety director can do. Policy and procedure, that means setting the policy and procedure, not enforcing policy and procedure. That's the chief's job. The chief, the chief's job is a daily, daily, setting schedules, making sure protocols filed with respect to investigating crimes.
My question is, what if he disagrees with the chief, or he disagrees with the fire, or he disagrees with anybody? What's his authority?
I understand. His authority is to overrule in areas of policy and procedure, management and executive function. So, does he overrule those under him? Yes. Are there instances where he needs to come to the mayor and council on that? Absolutely.
So, what do you really need him for, this with these frivolous, whatever you want to call them, lawsuits, frivolous, flying around?
Well, it's really not.
That's basically what you need him for, because if I want a stop sign on my street, he can't do it.
No, he can't put a stop, stop sign.
I'm gonna pay you fifty thousand dollars to worry about having lawsuits, or is our insurance company gonna drop us because we have too many issues, too many policies that are in default, or whatever the hell you want to call it?
There is a tremendous amount of litigation for a small town.
It's a joke. It's beyond, it's not beyond the pale. We all know that. It's not beyond the pale.
Yes, I understand. He needs to set the procedures for that.
But that's an important thing to explain to the public.
Well, what, who, who.
I'm giving this out presently, from the case that we're in. We don't have any.
Yeah. Managing the litigation would be one of the aspects.
Okay, listen, that's, this, this is a question, right? I'm, I want to know what this guy's gonna do for fifty or a hundred thousand dollars a year?
Well, no salary is given this guy.
Please.
Part-time, full-time, I'm not giving.
Even that aside, I'm only throwing a number. It doesn't make a difference what the number is.
I understand.
It's what the man's actually gonna, and what's his authority, and does he carry a hammer?
Oh, yes.
Or is he carrying, or is he carrying a feather? I mean, this is what you want to know.
He's carrying a hammer in certain instances and a lighter hammer, hammer in others.
Right, and more importantly, he's carrying the rule of law. And no one on this council, no one on this council swung a knife, made anyone cry, did anything like alleged, okay? But we have to deal with it.
I understand.
And we have to start dealing with it somewhere, and this is where we're starting.
Okay, then I have another question, which is, except this side, you're missing from seventy to seventy-four in this package.
Yes.
Why?
Because we needed to discuss them in closed session and then come out here and do an oral motion on it.
We were actually just testing to make sure you're paying attention.
Then I have another question for you.
Yes.
There's about three members to the Lions Club, or whatever the hell it is. Why are you not here? Can I do something to the group?
Uh, we are, you will hear the motion, and, and then you can get your answer through that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I do understand that.
That's for someone else.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, David.
Sorry?
Andrew Nigga, fifty-four El Street.
I did just say that. I'm sorry, sir. What's your name?
Andrew Nigga, fifty-four El Street. I'm also a volunteer firefighter, as is my brother, family affair, as many other of the volunteers in the department are familiar relationship with sons and fathers, brothers and sisters, et cetera. Last meeting, I spoke and I said I was, you know, really turned off by the toxic nature of politics in this town. And, you know, there is a problem. You guys are right, there is a problem, and it's clearly, as a taxpayer, you know, it's clearly not the right path we're going down. But, you know what, it's also a two-way street in terms of, you know, lawsuits are a two-way nature. It's an adversarial system, you know, there's, each person has a side to everything. And we need to find a better way to do this. And I think before you guys go and hire or look at the creation, whatever you want to do, you know, what's missing in this town is the ability to talk to one another. Now, clearly, I've been a partisan in the past, maybe I still am, maybe I'm not, I don't know what I am right now. But there's just this unwillingness to just sit down at the table and talk. And I think that before we, with all due respect, I'm sorry.
Attorney.
Attorney.
Or borough attorney.
Borough attorney. Before we pay you additional thousands of dollars, which I'm sure you wouldn't mind to do this, you know, maybe you guys can sit down at the table and talk to the police officers, talk to the firemen, whoever you want to include in this, and find out. Because, I'll be honest with you, I don't want to pay any more of your salary than I have to. I don't think anybody else in this room does. And I think that it's time that some of the people up here, you know, swallow their pride or swallow their ego and start talking to the people that are dressed in blue, that wear the badge, that their bosses, their management, whatever it is. You guys are all adults. You can come up with a solution, and that's what we elected you to do. So do it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Beijing, David Gori, one sixty-five Charlotte Place. Mr. Mayor, I honestly, with all due respect, your little speech in the beginning was really disappointing, because if you really wanted to be effective, I think you would have started with an apology, and you would have said some things that would have really demonstrated that you want to get serious. You have not demonstrated that you want to get serious. You have demonstrated that you want to control at hours' debts, at fifty, hundred, thousand dollars. Since you took over, we have added to the payroll. The town ran very well before, and I think everyone in this room knows what the root cause, or most people have an idea, I don't know exactly, what the root cause of this discontent is, and you know, also. You know, and you're not being honest. And that's what it takes. If you want to get along, it takes honesty. And unfortunately, you don't have the courage, or you haven't demonstrated it yet, and that's very disappointing. As a leader, sometimes you need to apologize. Sometimes you need to say things that are really from the heart. I don't know if you have that ability. I hope you do. Next question, Lions Club. What is this for the Lions Club? It looks like a crack house. Can we, can I get a little information about what that building is?
Yeah, sure, I'll, I'll go on. There's been a request by the Lions Club to renew, to renew a lease that has long expired. The, the mayor and council will have a motion later on and an oral resolution. They want a lease with certain provisions in it the council has instructed me on, and will authorize me to negotiate, et cetera. The anomaly there is that we own the land, but they own the structure. And that needs to be dealt with in an appropriate manner. The lease was maybe forty years old, and it expired maybe thirty years ago. There was a written letter that I remember in the file, just one letter, I think from a former mayor, that extended the lease.
From Mayor crazy.
It's, it's, okay, so, it's never been to the council in years.
Okay.
They want to renew, and there is some discussion about the condition of the building as well.
Well, I would imagine it needs to be condemned or something like that, but, but I don't want to hurt the Lions Club. And in fact, if there was any, anyone to contact, I wouldn't even mind joining the Lions Club. There's no.
Turn the corner. Don't sign up.
Great, maybe we can be invigorated, the Lions Club. But it, it should be, it should be, and with all due respect to the, to the members, let's do something. Let's put, every, every other town has the signs put up, join, you know, meets here and whatever. So I think either be invigorated, or let's use it for a library, or, or something that's useful for the town. Or let's get the Lions Club to help fund the library for the town, for our residents, among all the other good work that we do. So either way, I think that it's a good thing that that's coming to the Lions. Again, I want to repeat that I think the little speech that the mayor made in the beginning was not adequate. It didn't go far enough. And I really encourage you to hold up the mirror, all of you, and really see what you can do. Leadership goes from the top to the bottom. It starts at the top, and you're the example. You could, you could bridge that, and you could, you, I had hopes for you in the beginning.
I know you did.
And I, I honestly say I'm really disappointed.
You know, I actually did restrain myself. So, I just think you're misinformed, and I appreciate your comments, but you are misinformed, very misinformed, okay?
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Russell Perrino, at two twenty, February avenue. So I missed the best of the meeting, John.
Welcome back.
And back, I'm sorry. First, I urge the mayor and council to ignore, ignore the personal attacks that are made to the mayor and anybody else here. It speaks more to the person that's making the attacks than to anybody that's trying to do their job. And I urge you not to even respond. It's not really a. Secondly, I've noticed something over the past year, let's say. I came up with an acronym. It's, it's getting old. And the letters stand for obstruction, or obstructing, litigation, and, I'm gonna do it again, sorry. Obstruct, litigate.
No, you're right.
Excuse me. Obstruct, litigate, divide. And there seems to be a, a common goal, a common thread in many of the comments I made here each night over the period of months and months that I attended these meetings. And it all starts here. And if the members of the public that are supporting, let's say, some of these litigants and these plaintiffs, they can have a conversation and say, you know what, you're affecting my taxes too. And if the appointment of an individual may actually save the borough money to deal with all this senseless litigation, and it saves potential legal fees, you're paying someone to do something not at a legal rate, but at a lower rate, because this person's going to be on the payroll, it may not have to be forever, but until this issue is taken care of, and these plaintiffs, one by one, the cases are ready to settle, which I do encourage, if it can be done, or litigated, you may need someone to be stepping in the middle of this. It's not the mayor's job, it's not the council's job to be trying to work through these lawsuits one by one. It's a full-time job. I can imagine what it's like. There's not, it's not one. So I think those that support this litigation, the plaintiffs, let's say, and that's also litigation by the plaintiffs that are making these arguments, they should be talking to their friends and their neighbors. Because I think, I believe that the mayor and this council, if they had the right to, the ability to settle any of these cases, they would do it here and now. And I think that would be the goal here. I hope it is. But if they don't want to settle, let's, let's have the people in this room, go to their friends and say, listen, we don't want to be spending this money to defend these suits. They're frivolous. We all know it, and they'll come up in November like we do every year, and, you know, that's my own opinion. That's when you'll see that they'll make the, try and make the papers with them. It's silly. It's costing us all money. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just to pick up on that, you know, Mr. Perrino actually has a good point. Our, our democracy is threatened every time, every time we get sued over frivolous matters. Our democracy is threatened. You know, and for me, democracy is priceless, so we're gonna see this through, and that's it.
I'm Mary O'Shea, twelve Bergen Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank the city mayor and council, all the members, for their service, and all the years that people put in in the past, ex-council people, ex-mayors, everyone, everyone, I hope, tries to do the good, best job they can. Sometimes you make mistakes, sometimes I don't agree with various portions, but I do believe that most, most of the time, you try to do what you feel is right for the town and right for the citizens. And in the same vein, I, I support the police department. They've always been there when I needed them, the fire department, the same. But I know, I've read in the record lately, there were other towns also that were considering a public safety officer. I, I thought Edgewater and it was Bergenfield or Dune on someplace. A couple of towns, I had read articles in the record. So it's, and it's not a new concept, because I know years ago, twenty-five years ago, perhaps, but like, Joe Delaney, who retired as a police chief in Paramus, went up to Ramsey and was police director up there, because he couldn't be a chief, because he was collecting the pension as a chief, so he's a police director. But, you know, there might be necessary to have someone that can take care of a lot of the details that are connected to all these lawsuits, to make sure that things are given out the way they're supposed to be given out to, I know when Chief Pauling was there, I know he was always doing, trying to get grants and contracts and stuff. There's a lot of different aspects of things that can be done, and maybe they are being done, but it might be better to have somebody in a, in, in between level to handle it. I'm not against it. I'm not thrilled with seeing another salary, but in the long run, it might be cheaper than lawsuits and lawsuits and legal bills and settlements. It's, it's, it's just outrageous. We, we are a laughing stock. I mean, you meet somebody and they, oh, I read about your town. Oh, my God, what's going on over there? I mean, you know, there has to be an end to it. There has to be an end to it. So, I, I, I hope that fair-minded members of the council will put their heads together and come up with a good solution for this and be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hold on a second, there's other people.
This guy, yes.
Karen Geiger, two seventy, Alford. First of all, the function of coordinating lawsuits. Um, first of all, the function of coordinating lawsuits and providing information to the appropriate people, the various plaintiffs and defendants, should be codified and part of the borough clerk's function. And I really don't understand why the borough clerk, who no longer has the administrative functions, that's a full-time job, can't handle this effectively and set up the appropriate procedures for handling litigation if that is the main and real purpose of your, uh, public safety director position. Uh, the other item I wish to ask Anne Murray, or our attorney, I'm sorry if it's too high. I just want to know where in the Open Public Meetings Act, do you find the justification, I believe the Open Public Meetings Act is NJFA ten four twelve, which exemption did you feel was appropriately used to allow the borough to meet in closed session to discuss a petition?
I'm sorry? The motion was read into the record.
The motion just said that you were discussing it. I want to know where...
I'm sorry. The motion stayed on.
In NJFA ten point four, which of the nine exceptions did you invoke in order to allow discussion in closed session about the establishment of a petition?
Pending or anticipated litigation, end or contract negotiation, end or matters falling within...
How does that have to do with...
Excuse me. You're interrupting me. You're interrupting me. End or matters falling within the attorney-client privilege, and we're not going to reveal the discussions that we had, and they are appropriate under the Open Public Meetings.
But which exception do you use? Which exception? I'm just, there are nine exceptions, very specific.
The motion sets forth the reason, pending or anticipated litigation, end or contract negotiation, end or matters falling within the attorney-client privilege.
And how does a petition fall within the contract negotiation or attorney-client privilege? Or any of the others? How to do that?
Um, when, when, I'm not here for cross-examination by you, but certainly they do fall within that. That's our position. Thank you.
Can you, can you tell me which of the ten litigations that are currently pending? There are ten on your, so can you tell me which of the ten, itemized the ten, open litigation against the borough?
You know, I forgot to mention the one that you're a plaintiff in.
Yes, and I don't consider it frivolous at all.
If she's costing you money everywhere. Like I said.
Yes, I am. And maybe if you, if you followed appropriate procedures and the rule of law, you wouldn't have the litigation that you have. And if you look at the police litigation, there are common...
I think you've had them.
And similar offenses involved.
You can have my three minutes.
Thank you. No, we're not doing three minutes. We're just becoming redundant.
Perhaps you should look to yourselves to the reasons that there are ten litigations sitting here for the borough and not go to spend more money to put a damper on the police and the fire department who protect us and who we had no problems with and no concerns with before you came to power.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
What is so uncool about that to do with... Take one.
First, I'd like to address Councilwoman O. Uh, Councilwoman O, I was really disturbed by your attempt to suppress public discussion of public matters for a couple of reasons. A, because you tried to suppress public discussion of public matters. And B, because you apparently haven't read these lawsuits.
What are you, uh, talking about? What are you referring to?
You tried to get the mayor to stop discussing the lawsuits.
Yeah, because he was talking about pending litigations and I just wanted to put the bar off.
Nonsense. He was, he was discussing things that were...
I, I didn't want another lawsuit coming on. I was addressing the court attorney.
Nonsense.
Councilwoman O, the citizen has the floor.
He was discussing things that were, are complaints, complaints that any individual, including a trained lawyer such as yourself, can obtain from caser, if there are federal lawsuits, at the civil case room at the courthouse in Hackensack, if there are state lawsuits, or by making a request online from the state for the lawsuit. And everything he said, I've read because apparently unlike you, I've actually read the lawsuits. And I know that Ms. Geiger is making the big deal about all of the ones and how wonderful things were. Apparently she's forgetting some of the previous lawsuits involving the police. For example, BBCon. That's the one where the plaintiff alleged that the police department failed to investigate sexual abuse of a minor. Um, let's see, we've had a whole bunch of them from the citizens alleging that their rights are violated and we have, uh, one still pending. Um, but Mrs. Geiger is forgetting about those.
She's left the room.
Um, second, um, I wrote a letter to the council, which I haven't noticed any of you mentioning. Um, Councilman Versa and Councilman, oh, you were on the council when this incident occurred. Um, what did I do that?
What is that?
Uh, when the minutes were inaccurately reported. Uh, they portrayed me in a false light, their defendatory, and they exposed the borough to litigation, and you guys both wrote it in favor of them. Um, why you did, I don't know because the meeting was taped and you could have easily checked the books and you should have given what they said. Uh, so, um, I think one or the other of you needs to make a motion to have the borough administrator hold a page and review this in comparison to the minutes. Uh, and I realize you can't do that now in public session, but I was expecting you to do that because defending citizens in meetings is an attempt to suppress public discussion, not legitimate use of government resources.
Senator Sbarro, one six five Charlotte Place. As long as I've been able to collect, there's always been lawsuits going back and forth. I think council, police officers, something that is crazy. Um, what's happening now, first of all, I, I'd like to understand, police officers, do, what type of an education do they have to have? Are they previously police officers? Like, what qualifies them?
We're not here.
Well, you're presenting a pirate's theory, so I just want to understand.
No, no, we're not.
No, no, we're, this is a discussion about a problem and how we solve it. One of the ways might be hiring a public safety director or a police director.
So the public safety director, you would expect him to stop people from suing?
Or her.
Or her. I wasn't, in general, so...
No, it would actually...
Would have, you know, if I wanted to ship, I would, how many ships?
No, no, you're, you're missing the point.
So you're saying that this will stop the lawsuits that are going on?
No, 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 no. This, this will set a policy within the police department to restore law and order, the rule of law, and professionalism, so that the people who work there can come to work, feel free to do their jobs, and not feel any undue influence or pressures, and have good policies to follow, okay? That's all we're trying to obtain here. If you look at all, if you look at all the lawsuits that I listed, if you read the fact patterns there, those are all internal police department issues. They're all unsafe workplace claims.
You're saying they're political. Well, they're not all. There's others.
No, it's, it's police officer against police officer. No, no, but...
I mean, there are...
No, 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 those are different.
Talk about categories.
Those are different.
But the reality is, is that Eastwood also was suing. So I mean, I'm not...
No, she's not. No, she's not. You're making that up. You're making that up now, okay? That's fake news.
Okay.
Fake news. She's not suing. No one on this council, by the way, is suing either. Okay? No one here.
No one.
No, no one ever did.
You're saying that no one on our council has ever sued?
Uh, I never did. Anybody here ever sued?
I never sued.
No one ever did.
I never sued.
Okay. What else? What else? Because you're, you're here to be political, so let's go. Come on, let's go.
You constantly say that because that's what makes you happy. You only, you only represent the people who are politically...
Mr. Vigor Vario, she has the floor. You had the floor.
When I asked questions, I never did answer. So I'm going to ask again from the last meeting. I asked you, Carol, what the monetary value was of a tax appeal that needs to be paid on April fifteenth, okay?
I asked the question to...
And I still have not gotten the answer. Can you tell us what that is? It's due in a few days. It's due in a few days. Like, how do we not know what that is? I mean, it's a fair question, right? It's not political. Any, anybody on this council can answer it. Doesn't have to be Carol.
Did you get the documents, right?
I got the documents. There was no monetary value.
Can't you just, I mean, if you multiply, I'm trying to help you to, to find the answer. If, if you multiply by the rate that's in there, will it give you the number that you're looking for?
No, it goes back many years. So you, I'm going to have to look at the tax rates for all the previous years to calculate what that is. Why should I have to do that? You have to issue a check in three days.
Okay, then when we, I guess when we issue, see, under O four, we cannot create a document, right? So if we can't create a document, how do I get to that answer?
How are you paying it in three days if you don't know what the dollar value is? How is it in the budget? You don't know what the dollar value is.
I'm going to ask, who is that to answer that question? Will the borough attorney? I mean, that's not under, I don't find the check. No, Debbie, I do not find a check for the borough.
You assure me that it's in the budget. How can you assure me that it's in the budget for two thousand seventeen if you don't know what the dollar is?
Because the CFO, who is, who works for us, told the council that the money is in the budget.
I'm sorry if I can't...
I mean, I can't, you know...
You also said that there was two hundred ninety-five...
I'm not going to allow you to talk about borough employees.
Can't do that.
You cannot do that. Mayor?
Can't do that.
Cannot allow that.
Can't do that. We can't talk about borough employees.
I can't talk about borough employees because that would be another lawsuit.
Okay. So how are we as residents supposed to feel comfortable that it's in the budget? If this council, nobody can tell me what line item in the budget exists this payment that has to be made in three days?
You know what? He's coming April eighteenth, right? Uh, who was that? Yes. Okay. Then we will ask him directly. I, I, we cannot create documents for you, but if the clerk wants to somehow figure out how she can find that answer out, I don't know what else. I got your wallpapers you wanted, now you want the council...
You have, no, I asked you, I told that to you.
Please, one of your residents has the floor.
You have a budget. I've been reviewing the budget.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Take, take it outside, folks. If you can't get along inside, go outside because you can't do this, okay? The resident has the floor, please.
I'm just trying to understand the budget that exists that we're going to be talking about and voting on on the eighteenth. Okay? So I would like to understand, in that budget, where is this money and how much is it that is in the budget to pay for this tax appeal? That's what I want to know. What line is it so that I can ask the questions to the board? It's not clear. It's not black and white.
I will ask the CFO.
Okay, thank you. Will somebody get back to me before the meeting? Can I call you?
I can't say that I'll have that answer.
Can I call Chris or...
No, they're not allowing it.
Okay. So I'm just, so who's going to get back to me?
I'm going to get the answer for you, but after what's...
So I have to wait until April eighteenth to find out when I get it?
It's four days, five days from this.
Okay. We'll just keep asking.
It is a holiday week. It's, it's a holiday weekend too, Mark.
I have the party, so unless we go, Carol, we'll pass.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Yes?
I'm Maria Valeri, forty-five Jane Riley. Okay, um, it is very, um, great to hear Mr. Nick out that he's not so partisan anymore. I kind of like him now. Uh, he, he made a lot of sense in what he said. Uh, the only problem is, is that, uh, everyone here, including Mr. Vigor Vario and everybody, is, is saying that we should all be talking to each other. We should talk to each other, they should talk to you, and no one is actually realizing that all these lawsuits, which are public record, anybody can go and get a copy of any complaint once it's filed, um, that all these complaints are not something that we can talk about. This is internal. This is going on, whatever is going on needs to be resolved. And I, for one, am happy to see that you may be thinking of hiring someone to maybe, you know, get a hold of things. Um, I, I don't think anybody's above the law. I don't care who it is. So I hope that somehow we get a grip on what's going on. It seems to me, I've been coming to a lot of meetings, and we've never had all these issues about police and firemen, because it seemed like everybody was on board with whoever was sitting up there. And I'm really upset that it's constant attacks against you guys, meeting after meeting after meeting, because we're not happy with who's sitting up there. And this, this is what has to stop. The conversations needs to be, let's accept who's there and let's work with them. And that's my concern. Also, in all the meetings that I've ever attended in this town, while Mr. Perici was sitting up there, would throw anybody out if they were talking. I could barely hear what's going on here because of all the conversations that are going on, extremely disrespectful to the people sitting up there and to the people who want to hear what they were saying. Thank you.
Okay, um, can I motion to close public session, please? Second? On favor? On favor?
You said I can go after him, but I...
No, I didn't say that. You already won. On favor?
Thank you, Vigor Vario, one sixty-five Charlotte Place.
Go close.
I suggest...
No, no, sit down.
You are...
No, no, you had your chance. You had your chance. We're done. We're done.
List all the parties on this wall next meeting.
Chief, please send in a police officer.
I don't need that. I'll leave myself.
Thank you. Good night.
I wouldn't give you the satisfaction.
Thank you. By the way, folks, I will stay after the meeting. If anyone does want to have a discussion with me on anything, I will sit at that table for a few minutes. Feel free to come up and, and talk to me. Charlotte moved.
And who seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
So, by the way, folks, missed in all that is that we are a very fortunate town, very blessed town. We don't have a fraction of the problems that the rest of the world is dealing with, okay? We should be grateful for it. We manufacture our problems here, and I'm going to unmanufacture them, okay? Oh, you know what? We need to talk to one individual, um, the, the home...
Stan from six fifty-five Floyd.
Sorry, Sam, I almost forgot you. You, you had to raise your hand.
It's going to be hard to follow.
I would have gladly picked you. I would have gladly picked you.
Sure you had to raise your hand.
Oh, no, it was, it was insightful. I, my wife and I are the owners at six fifty-five Floyd. Uh, we purchased the home last year. It's gone through some renovations. Um, I've been told that when we purchased the home, there was a bluestone patio area, uneven, lots of cracks, just not maintained over the years. And right now, we're in the process of, uh, replacing that patio from the bluestone to, I believe it's paper blocks. Um, the, the, the actual space is not being enlarged. It is just replacing the material, taking the old cracked, uh, bluestone out, replacing it with paper blocks. I've been told that there is an easement.
Okay. Let, let me, um, because the, um, the, the council is going to entertain a, the council is going to entertain a resolution shortly. This, for, for members of the public, this is which regard to item number seventy-four in the resolution section of the agenda. So are you asking the mayor and council to entertain a resolution allowing your patio over the easement?
This, for members of the public, this is with regard to item number 74 in the resolution section of the agenda. Sir, are you asking the mayor and council to entertain a resolution allowing your patio over the easement?
Yes.
Okay, that will be entertained, okay?
Okay.
Do you have anything you wanna add? I mean, we have all the details.
Yeah, all the details, okay, well, I, I do have the almost finished picture. As you can see, the square footage is the same for the patio, it's not being enlarged. Um, it's more of a health and safety, I have a body of any one-year-old, and this thing material was uneven and cracked.
Yeah, somebody is picking the door there.
This is the current, so, um, you were, and you and I discussed, and I reviewed this with Mr. Neville, how do you say your last name? Neville, okay, Mark, I call him. Uh, we discussed, uh, this is our DPW superintendent, I also discussed with, this with building. You are looking to have your paddy, a new patio, exactly where the old patio was, correct?
Correct.
And the encroachment over the easement area is, there's an easement the borough has in the backyard of your property and other neighboring properties for a sewer line.
Correct.
Okay, so you are willing to sign a hold harmless agreement allowing the borough to do any necessary changes to repair the, uh, or maintain the sewer line?
Correct.
And you understand that that hold harmless agreement means DPW comes in, might have to tear up your yard, and will not have to pay to have it put back again. You have to pay to put it back again. Okay, as long as you understand all that. And you're asking that you, you're beautifying the entire exterior, this is part of that?
It is, yes.
It looks very nice. You, um, what I may suggest is, has anybody inspected that line? It may be better to do it now, before you put in all that work. Just, you know, because you look like you're doing a very nice job here, but, and of course, if it's only an emergency, if it's an emergency, the town will have to do something, and, you know, I just thought maybe, maybe there's a way to just test a few things. But we'll, we'll take care of it.
And the easement is just a small, maybe one third of-
It's only about a third of the, of the-
Of the easement area. It's not over the entire easement area, so it's probably on the side of the pipe?
Why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we try, can we have a vote on that now?
Yeah, I have to-
Ahead of everything else, and then that way he doesn't have to stay here for a minute.
Ask him, ask him. Okay, I'm gonna state this resolution orally, and someone needs to make a motion as I stated and second it as I stated. So, this would be-
Seventy-four.
No, that's okay, we'll take you out of order.
Seventy-four.
This is, uh, resolution number seventy-four is to authorize the encroachment of the easement that exists at 655 Floyd Street in the rear of the property, for the property owners, uh, subject to a, a proper, uh, hold harmless and waiver agreement to be executed between the property owner and the borough. Borough attorney, you take care of paperwork.
I make that motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Done. All right, thank you.
Just give me a phone, give me a phone number. Thank you.
You don't have to leave if you don't want to.
You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay.
Yeah, that's Mark.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have to vote on that, I made a motion and I don't wanna get sidetracked.
On the favor?
Seventy-four.
Oh, we all said aye. It's a resolution. Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Passes.
So you're one of the few people that are unanimous yes.
Thank you, sir.
Come on, off. Okay, so let's do the other resolutions.
Okay.
We'll do one at a time.
Okay, resolution, uh, 2017, number sixty-seven. Authorize mayor to sign lease agreement with Conica Minolta. We need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Uh, yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Great, thank you, we can now print at the borough. Sixty-eight, author-
I'm sorry, you go ahead.
You sure?
I have a question on this resolution, but what do you- I was just gonna say.
Authorize use of construction, of county construction board of appeals. Do you need an explanation?
Yes, um, I'd like to know if there's any clause to the, uh, the borough for using the county appeals.
None, none whatsoever. It's rather than us doing it, and we did have a board, it's just dissolving our board and utilizing the county. May I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-nine, approval of Rappel license for Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace. Motion?
So move. Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Number seventy, authorize mayor to sign agreement for use of Palisades Park Pool for summer camp. I need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Number seventy-one will be read by the borough attorney, as well as seventy-two and seventy-three.
Right. This was the subject of closed, uh, discussion with respect to the Lions Club. The resolution and the motion is being changed to authorize the borough attorney to negotiate and draft a lease with the Lions Club with standard lease provisions, as well as specific provisions having to do with, um, condition of the property and other items that are in consideration due to the fact that the ownership is with the borough and the building is with the Lions Club. Uh, so that's authorizing borough attorney to negotiate and draft. The lease will come back to the council for approval when we are done.
We need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Seventy-two, please?
Seventy-two is authorizing payment by the borough for the co-pay for emergency room services under the collective bargaining agreement for the PVA, uh, of the Borough of Angler Cliff. The payment should be the difference between twenty-five dollars, which is stated in the, um, in the collective bargaining agreement, and fifty dollars for the year 2016, and the difference between twenty-five dollars in the collective bargaining agreement and seventy-five dollars in the year 2017. And basically, the motion is this, authorizing the borough to meet its obligations under the collective bargaining agreement to pay the difference between the emergency room fee as it was and, and between, uh, between the, the group, the price as it was and what the state increased it to.
Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Number seventy-three, please?
Yes, this is a, uh, resolution that is going to put into effect a policy having to do with public improvements and easements that happen to be located on or under private pol- property. The policy of the borough will be that there should be no permanent construction over those easements. This has, uh, this grandfather's in existing conditions, but requires the borough councils, mayor and councils' approval for any structure over easements owned by the borough.
I need a motion?
So move. Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Um, yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
We see seventy-four on the line.
Correct. Seventy-five, tax appeal settlement, block eleven oh four, lot nine. I need a motion?
So move. Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Uh, resolution seventy-six has been tabled.
Actually, don't you need a motion to table that?
Okay.
Make a motion to table that.
Yep.
Second.
We're going on favor now.
Aye.
Okay. Seventy-seven, authorize mayor to sign lease agreement with Action Data Services. I need a motion? I'm sorry, who was that? Okay.
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Seventy-eight, approval of dedication by rider for affordable housing. I need- Second?
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Seventy-nine, approval of dedication by rider for police donations. I need a motion?
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Eighty, opposed US Guard establishment of Hudson River anchorages. Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Recuse.
Woo? I'm sorry, M. Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Woo? Thank you.
So that, that resolution actually relates to the contemplated action by United States Coast Guard to open up the Hudson River to become a basic warehouse for, uh, oil coming down the river. What's happened is the federal law has changed, and for the first time in American history, we're, as Americans, permitted to export oil. So the oil that would come down the river actually starts off in North Dakota, goes on rails, comes to Albany, goes into barges, and then comes down the river. So what was, um, requested of the Coast Guard by the Ship Owners Association was that they permit the ship owners to, to store their oil in barges along the river. There's some anchorages existing right now, but this would be many more, about ten more. Uh, there's one actually already in front of Angler Cliff, but thankfully they don't use it that much. Although, when we're trying to get this picture done, uh, there was a barge parked in front of it for days, and Ramona took the photo, had to wait for the barge to move. Uh, eventually it did. So, a couple of years ago, we learned all about the view shed and the high-rise issue in the cliffs, so now we have an issue at the bottom of the cliffs, um, with the river. So the argument is, look, you can just bring the oil down to the port and put it on land storage in, in silos and tank farms. Uh, it's a little more expensive, uh, rather than using the public waterway as your warehouse, so. Uh, I had a meeting that I hosted at Borough Hall with the mayors of Alpine and Tannafly and the president of Sinek Hyson. Uh, we, we met for about an hour, they, they discussed their strategy for dealing with this. Uh, I've got calls down to, uh, Fort Lee and, uh, Edgewater as well. So we're trying to just band together. Westchester's already come on board, we're doing a resolution tonight. Tannafly and Alpine will do theirs as well. Uh, in addition to just the view that would be obstructed, there, there's, it's more hazardous to shipping, to leisure boats, and also, um, higher chance of pollution, which finally the river's gotten to a point where it's cleaner, um, and doing this is going to jeopardize that. So, I think it's posted.
Eighty-one, accept donation of Armenian flag. I need a motion?
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Eighty-two, authorize hiring of summer camp directors. I need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson of Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Eighty-three will be added by the borough attorney?
And I think I might have an eighty-four, I'm not sure. So, let me state, we, for the record, this is with respect to the matter of the borough versus the Borough of Angler Cliff, statute number V E R L five forty-eight dash seventeen. Authorize the borough attorney to take, where is that?
To take all necessary and appropriate action.
Appreciating it, go ahead.
To take all necessary and appropriate action, including, including counterclaims and other charges of ethics violations.
With respect to that pending litigation.
I need a motion?
So move.
I need a second?
Second.
Can you repeat the motion one more time? I'm sorry. Look, you know what? That's what the tape at this point, you don't wanna say it wrong, if you say it different than what you just said.
The ma- the mayor wrote it down.
I'm never gonna repeat that, same way.
Okay.
It was, uh-
It doesn't have to be worth a word, but, uh-
Well, it's for the borough attorney to take all necessary and appropriate action in the Favaro Geiger Simon's case against the borough, in order to be able to lodge counterclaims or other ethic violations by a former council of the borough.
We have a motion and I have a second. Uh, councilperson of Versa?
I'm gonna abstain on that.
E. Park?
I'm gonna abstain as well.
O.?
Abstain.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Three extensions and three yeses. No tie.
All right, it passes.
Are we doing an eighty-four?
Oh, I, I need to ask the, uh, mayor or the council people. With respect to the public safety director, are we taking action to refer it for review to the police committee, or?
I'd like to have a motion to do that.
No, I don't think you need a motion. Well, you could do a motion, but I don't think you need a resolution for that.
No, but in this town, I think you do.
Okay, you have a resolution. Okay, you have a resolution.
Let's have a resolution.
Okay. So, the... So, the... I'll state it and then someone... This is a resolution eighty-four to submit the issue of a Public Safety Director or a Police Director to the Police Committee of the Mayor and Council for consideration and review that to the Council.
Gather information.
Gather information, meet with people, however you want to.
I need a motion.
Leave with the Police Chief, Fire Chief, whoever. Councilman O'Neal made the motion. Do you have a second, please?
Second.
Give a vote.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. Public hearing for the ordinance, Mayor?
Go ahead. Madam President, would you please read that into the record? Actually, I'll do it. It's ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero five. Ordinance amending code for use of recreational facilities and required permits. This is a second reading and it's a public hearing. Do you have a motion to open up to the public? Second? On favor? Okay, is there anybody in the public who wishes to be heard just on ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero five? Ordinance amending code for use of recreational facilities and required permits. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
One more?
Second.
One favor? The next ordinance is a first...
No, we have to vote on it.
Oh, so...
So, let me now read it exactly by title. So, the resolution is ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh five. An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Angler Cliffs to add provisions for use of recreational facilities and required permits. We need a motion, please? Counsel persons of versa?
Um, no.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
The next one is removed from the agenda because I didn't get it back.
Okay, so...
Do you have a motion to table that?
So, no. It wasn't tabled, but it just left. Was it tabled, but you didn't... No. But nothing, it's removed from the agenda.
Right.
I didn't...
Okay, so it's removed.
So, that's removed. That's fine.
Seventeen oh six.
Okay, seventeen oh six has been removed from the agenda. We're up to committee reports on our agenda. Councilman of versa, can you state your committee and give us a report?
Lighting, and I actually had a few requests from residents.
Too much lighting?
Yeah, basically. No, they, some people asked to have cones put up in front of their homes. You know, light poles. So, I reached out to P S E and G, and they haven't come back from yet.
All right, well, if they don't, you and I can go do that tomorrow.
Thanks. We can put the poles in. I got a big thing.
Councilwoman Park?
Board of Health, we had a meeting the last month, so there's nothing to do. No, that was that last month.
Councilwoman O.
Transportation. I think we have to come up with a way to get the word out to the community that this is a service that we provide to the seniors. I think a lot of the newcomers in town, they don't realize it. So, I'd like to talk to maybe the, is it the Silver...
Silver Citizens.
Committee? And even maybe the, what's the other, what's the name of the other committee? The, ah, the International... The name's not coming to me, but...
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I know the, yeah...
The different, no multi-ethnic...
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we need to get the word out there because the newcomers, they... Some of the residents don't even know that we have the senior center in town. So, I think it's something that we need to get out there.
On the website?
On the website. That's a good idea. Thank you.
It's on there already, I think, right?
It's on there. But taxi?
Taxi is.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it, Councilwoman O.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman McMorro?
Okay, on, I'm gonna read the record for each stuff first. First, I want to thank, these are a country with a great success. We had it last Saturday. I want to thank the entire Mayor and Council for coming out there and helping out to set up and coming out to support. It was greatly appreciated. We were out there at, from seven and then eight, and then we had the crowd, and it was, it was great. And I think most important, the kids had a great time, and we ran out of all the eggs as... We had, we actually counted. I went back because you asked me for lunch, and we had more this year than last year. So, that's a good sign. Community Pass. I'm gonna ask, I see one member of the press that's in the audience, and I'm gonna ask for his help in the coming weeks to get the word out and possibly write a story about Community Pass. Community Pass will be up and running in about four to six weeks. And what that is, it's an online registration and payment management software system. It's something, William and I took a webinar on it. We're working very closely with our new Recreation Director, Richard Casey, and what it's gonna do is help the residents to, A, be able to sign up online. We'll be able to understand how many people are signing up and categorize everything with the information that we're receiving, and then in turn, better serve the residents. So, we're excited about this because today's day and age, people want to be able to sign up online. And it's a great service. We will be offering the residents starting in four to six weeks, and we will be advertising this. And I hope the newspaper will make a, help us out and write a story about this. Little Eve opening day is April twenty-ninth. We feel, I encourage everyone to come, come out and support Little Eve and also support all of our recreation programs. April eighteenth is our budget adoption hearing. It's been over four weeks since our last meeting. Our budget was introduced, and today I was informed that the introduction was approved by several departments of the D L G S. I am again, for the fourth time, possibly fifth time, reaching out to every member of this council. If you have any questions, if you have anything to say, contact me. I haven't heard anything from anyone. I know two people voted no and one person abstained. I just wanna remind everyone to please, if you're voting no, you must have a reason that you're voting no. I haven't heard from you. I'd like to know why you're voting no. If there's something that maybe, you know, you have an idea of something that you want to let us know about, I'm here.
I did reach out to you, Cal. I didn't want to, I...
You did, I saw that last, and you still voted no.
And your answer was to look at the video from the Mayor Council meeting. You didn't give me the details that I asked you about this.
Actually, I responded to you immediately. I got to all your answers. I read them into the record, and you asked me to type them out for you.
You sent me a link to the video, to the Mayor Council meeting, and you said, "It's on the website, watch it for yourself."
I didn't say, "Watch it for yourself."
No.
I would never speak that way, but I...
Okay. So, I did reach out to you. So, your statement is incorrect, and nobody reached out.
Absolutely not. I got to your answers. I got to your answers.
Okay, so you're gonna email it to me? You got me my answers about this.
I read them into the record that night for you. Do you want me to...
I watched the video and taken it.
Do you have a substantive issue?
I...
An issue of meaning not procedure regarding the budget? Because the reason I ask...
Not right now, but I did have a question, and I did reach out to her. So, her statement about no one reaching out to her is incorrect.
No, I said, in the last four weeks, I haven't heard from anyone.
That budget is just paramount, paramount importance to our children, the rec programs in there, to our seniors, to our employees. So, I want the members of our council, if you have any issues, make sure you raise them before the eighteen.
Exactly, thank you, Mayor. I'm also reaching out, Councilwoman Park. I know you had some questions about the cap ordinance. Have you gotten your answers to the questions in the cap ordinance?
We're not, yes.
Okay, so you're comfortable with how it works, and you'll be able to vote in the next meeting?
Yes, I'll be.
Thank you. So, just whatever you need, just please reach out to me, and because April eighteenth is our budget meeting where we are, you know...
Actually, I forgot to mention something. I just wanna thank L G and H Mart. I know we had our, I know we're talking about business. Oh, I'm sorry, do you want to finish?
That would go on to new business.
We're gonna do this.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, the only thing I wanted to add is in our recreation programs, Richard started, one of the things he started, we got Taekwondo, which is a new program that's starting April twenty-sixth. We also have cheerleading, which we've never had before. And that is starting April twenty-fourth. So, it's exciting. We have a lot of new programs that are starting. I'm very excited to be a part of this.
Thank you. Councilman Park? Yes. Flamingo, you're usually the reason why. So, our fifth state application was conditional of birth of food, subject to encourage fire hydrant, lightning, payment, and stonewall. That is a condition that we need of the, Flamingo of the... And then, we discussed about the building is for twenty-eight percent health from the new senior house. And we are continuing to discuss around this coming month. And we are expecting a proper more new application. Come on, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember?
Relative to the Police Committee, as the mayor mentioned, we played cinema on Thursday, April sixth, commemorating the line of duty of Police Chief Fred Wip. Just want to thank the Police Chief, the Mayor, and the Chaplain for the very touching words that day. This Fred Wip's legacy is gonna live on with the Witty Clinic, which will start, Witty Baseball Clinic, which will start on April twenty-second. Last for five weeks at the field. As pertains to the Board of Education, the last meeting was on April third. The most important topic was the topic of math for our incoming first-class students. They are trying to decide whether to go with Go Math or Singapore Math, and a recommendation has been provided by the Board of Education. There's gonna be continued conversation with the parents. On B W, April third, Mayor and Catherine Spinel, they held a meeting to discuss staffing issues with B W. An oil spill has been cleaned up, and also snowplow issue during the major snowstorm we had last. Some of the paths at Witty Field were not cleared, and, you know, obviously, the winter's over. So, we'll make sure that next year we won't have the same problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. In addition to the Witty Clinic, the Witty legacy continues in the name of the park, Johnson Avenue, will continue with that name, regardless of whether or not we renovate it or not. It'll always have that name. I reassured the family, and they were very delighted to hear that.
Yes. Thank, Mayor, can I speak on old business?
Sure.
I just want to add to what has been said about the introduction of the budget and the introduction of the cap ordinance, which took place last month. The adoption is up for consideration on Tuesday, April eighteenth, at six P M. Councilmembers, we do need a hundred percent attendance. We need to adopt the budget by a majority vote of four. An abstention will not be accepted by the D L G S. It's considered an abdication of duty if someone abstains on something without a legitimate reason versus voting either yes or no. So, I do want councilmembers to have their questions answered preferably before that meeting or be prepared to specifically point to issues that you haven't had answered so that we can get the positive vote, yes or no, on both the cap ordinance and the budget. It's really important because if the budget fails on Tuesday, it will embark this town on a, this borough on a long and unpleasant road, which can take many serious turns. I'm sorry, no public...
Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, a new business? Councilwoman Park, you had something that you want to mention?
Yes, I just wanted to thank L G and H Mart for their generosity. They donated some items for our, we have a Korean Children's Day festivity at school, at North Cliff and Upper School, and they donated, like, a computer mouse to all the students, some backpacks, and some food. So, I just wanted to thank them.
That's great. I have one thing to add also. On March twenty-second, I attended a presentation at the upper school. It was given by a group that goes around teaching children to let go of drudges and move on. I thought maybe we should bring them in here also. But it was actually very touching because the stories were firsthand of people who had lost, hurt, or family dysfunction.